I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council study session. Let's please call, roll.
Mayor Mancarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Whoops.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
He is here.
All are present.
What'd you do to that, Billy?
I just felt the...
I am here.
Well, welcome, everyone, to this study session. We have two items on the agenda. Please grab a public comment card if you'd like to speak, and we'll start with item 3A.
Fire Department National Accreditation Presentation.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Dennis Light Fire Chief, City Prescott. This afternoon, over the next, oh, probably 15 to 20 minutes, I hope to just kind of give you the highlights of what's been a three-year undertaking for my department, along with some other city departments, in the pursuit of national and international accreditation. The accreditation body for fire services is the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, primarily based out of Chantilly, Virginia. A lot of folks ask, why accreditation? Well, I kind of always equate it to healthcare or the educational system. I can stand up here before you and exuberate the importance of our department and what services we provide. What accreditation does is bring in third-party independent viewpoints into that equation in order to verify and validate that what we say is what we're actually doing, and provides us a roadmap to guide us to continually improve over the course of perhaps decades or even beyond that. Anyways, it's a comprehensive fire and emergency services valuation. As most of you are aware, we're an all-risk department, so what it looks at is our program areas, which delve into fire suppression, emergency medical services, aircraft rescue and firefighting, technical rescue, and it kind of does a deep dive into our data. It's provided us to look at a self-look to our organization, and therefore provides some level of confidence for not only myself as the fire chief, our members, but more importantly, for the community. It's also had a community piece in the sense of two documents that are really critical, and I'll get to those in just a moment, but the performance measures are probably the most critical element that we're going to garner out of our process. It raises the profile of the agency and the community. If you kind of equate to a platinum standard, accreditation for fire departments, the platinum standard. Less than 5% of departments nationally are accredited, which for us, just kind of takes us to the capstone of becoming a very good organization, that anybody that's been in this community for any length of time, we've been the longest-serving municipal fire department or organized fire department for many decades, even centuries, and with that, what it does is bring in independent points of view to verify and validate that. It established, and this is really important for me because my career's going to sunset at some point, but what it does is allow for the furthering of the organization based on a roadmap that's set forth by the organization. So it kind of, it's created an agency-wide culture. This has been a bottom-up, top-down approach. There's probably not a member in my department that hasn't had some exposure to writing documents associated with our pursuit, and it also allows the tangible data to be verified and validated by a third party. And I take that like the Medicare system. For example, you have certain levels of service within Medicare. Medicare by itself is accredited. That just means they have an independent review party that submits themselves and looks at their stuff. Why do accreditation and why now, and why the Prescott Fire Department? I've held no secrets. This has been on my agenda since I got here about five and a half years ago. I felt it was very critical for us to get to a point of stability as an organization and as a city. So the timing of this is kind of aligned to do the future and look forward, not only at our snapshot in time of where we're at today, but provide us a roadmap as where to go. As kind of alluded to there as the inset, a goal without a plan is just a wish. This has forced our hand to planning, it's forced our plan to self-assess, and those elements. Gives the department defensible space. When someone comes marching through the door with questions, it allows us to provide reasonable and acceptable answers to many questions that folks propose to both yourselves at the dais, myself as a fire chief, or our members out in the field. So it provides us kind of the avenue to be able to dictate as to how we provide certain levels of service. It's a marketing plan. It touches, and I'll get into the, kind of the weeds a little bit here at the end, but it goes into 10 separate areas, everything from governance and administration to programs to training to external relationships. Take that last one, for example. This is, after 42 years in the fire service, this community has the best interoperability standards that I've ever experienced in my 42 years. Where we play well with others, they play well with us, and this will just further that as we continue to enhance our community services. And then finally, this is what it isn't, and contrary to what might have been in the paper, I think there was a misspeak there, but accreditation is not a underhanded way of getting what you need. It's a way of legitimizing what you need. And with that, you know, it does it in incredible manner. We will eventually serve host to four fire service professionals from across the country. One's from Illinois, one's from North Carolina, one out of Southern California, and I believe the other one's out of somewhere in the Southeast. They will come to us here on November 3rd and will be onsite to do the onsite assessment of our organization. It's not about playing to what other departments do. It's what our department does based upon a set goal and standards. The Center for Public Safety Excellence, a little bit about the accrediting body. They do a number of variations aside from just Commission on Fire Accreditation International. They do professional credentialing, as well as emergency management facilitation and other programs. So it's kind of the whole gambit. A number of my folks have undertaken becoming credentialed as fire officers. For example, Corey Mosier's a chief emergency medical services officer. I hold the distinction of a chief fire officer, and again, that was a self-referral to do that, and we go through this each and every three years, so we have to reassess. And it measures you as an individual, as well as you as an organization. How good is the fire department? He who says he can and he who says he can't are usually both right. I think everybody agrees with that. What this does, again, is reinforces the rights. It also identifies where we may be off course a little bit, and it provides us a method to get back on course and do what is considered best practices. It doesn't hold us to any time requirements. It doesn't hold us to anything other than what we feel meets the needs of this community. When we went through our development of our community risk assessment and standards of cover, what's acceptable here may or may not be acceptable in the Valley. It may not be acceptable across the way in Sedona. It is acceptable here. We vetted it through our community. Our community members provided input. Therefore, we feel we're on the right path in the goals we've set for ourselves. How do you know that your answer is credible? This is kind of where the rubber meets the road. How do we perform at emergencies? Well, I would be really concerned if every day we had a fire that we had to experience and every day we had to respond to a fire, or every day we had to go out and save somebody in a technical rescue environment. Emergency Medical Services runs a lot of our calls, however, it's also provided us some direction in order to relieve us of some of those types of responses. What's our community involvement? For example, being part of the fabric of the community is critical for any fire agency, whether it be Big Brothers, Big Sisters, whether it be Rotarians, whether it be Prescott area leadership, just for an example, or whether it be the church or the softball team. We need to be involved in those kind of things to make ourselves credible. How much do you save or lose due to fires? Expand beyond that. What's our save ratio? You know, it's nice to say, well, your save ratio is 4% of the values at risk, but what does that mean? We try to quantify that in a dollar cost. A lot of times what happens is you may have a million-dollar structure, and we are able to make stop-loss or stop the advancement of fire with only $100,000 damage. Well, that's a pretty good ratio when you think about it. And then what is your response time, turnout time? How fast we can get there has a direct bearing on how effective we are once we get there. The process for accreditation. Primarily, you start as a registered agency, and what that does is allow us the access to the materials, the manuals and those kind of things, allows us to participate in webinars and those kind of things. A number of my staff have. I kind of drank the Kool-Aid from accreditation since about 2003 in my previous organization, and I've kind of brought that forward here as well. So we became a registered agency about 24 months ago, which freed us up, and we've really started in earnest in the last 24 months of pulling together the documents that have moved us to today's status, which is a candidate agency. The bulk of the process was writing. It's very writing-intensive. We've developed a Fire and Emergency Services Self-Assessment Manual. It tops out at well over 1,000 pages. It provides for a description, a performance measure, and then an appraisal of how we do things, and then the plan, how we can do things better, over the course of about 244 individual performance indicators. So we measure ourselves against 244 different individual benchmarks. Of those, there's a number of those roughly somewhere between 70 and 80 that are considered core competencies, that as a best practice, you have to be able to adhere to and be able to follow those in order to be found credible. We've worked back and forth with our team. We feel they would not have made the step to come onsite come next month had we not had a reasonable chance of becoming successful at this. And then ultimately, the team comes in and does their visit, but then that is summarized in a very comprehensive and detailed report and presented to the commission proper, and then the commission itself, which is made out of 11 different entities, either accepts the team's recommendation, modifies it, or perhaps even denies it. I think that's unlikely at this particular junction because we wouldn't have gotten this far had a denial been on tap. Kind of the building blocks. First and foremost, probably about two years ago, I brought forward a expenditure before you to create our community risk assessment and standards of cover document. At the time, Councilman Good kind of alluded to, we have the talent to do it in-house, we just didn't have the capacity to do it in-house. We enlisted the Technical Services of Emergency Services Consulting, Inc. They brought forth and brought forth and published two particular documents, the CRA-SOC and then the Strategic Management Plan. The standards of cover, that kind of dictates how we do things. You know, this is our goal. This is our, what we aspire to get on scene. Our goal is usually a little higher than what we're performing at, and the reason for that is it's about improvement. We don't want 10-minute response times. We want to add efficiencies where we can to lower those response times because everything we do is a race against time. The Strategic Management Plan, it was very critical for myself and our organization to await the direction from the policy group to make sure our strategic management plan meshed with what has been presented by yourselves as the city's strategic management plan. And I think we did a very remarkable job of doing that, trying to tie our end game into what is desired out of the policy group. So that was very beneficial for us, your efforts, and then it was able to feed in some of those. So we've ended up with a number of smart objectives, specific, measurable, achievable, responsive, and timely, of which we started actually the day after we finished our strategic plan, trying to further those things into development. And then probably the biggest piece of this was the self-assessment manual. Again, we wrote to the performance indicators and we provided plans for each one of those. Some of these, we aren't performing up to where we really need to as an organization. We self-realize it, self-reflect it, but we've also put together a plan to get us to that point in time. So I think it's provided us a great roadmap. Kind of mentioned, it's purely voluntary to do this. It is accepted as a best practice. It meshes very well with ISO or the Insurance Services Office. In fact, some of the areas in water supply, for example, because we've improved upon our ISO rating going from a four to a two within the last year, it's allowed us kind of a pass on having to write to water supply. ISO already does that. Similarly, in category four, which is financial resources, Mark and the folks in finance, being GFOA credentialed, they're certified, allows us to kind of say, hey, we're already doing best practices under a different governing body, therefore, prima facie-wise, we meet those criteria as well. These are the 10 categories that we've assessed ourselves against. Governance and administration, pretty much how we do things, are we legally established? Assessment and planning is probably the most intensive one. We've divided our city into independent planning zones, looked at those planning zones, drilled down in those, and make sure the resources match what's in those zones. Goals and objectives, the strategic management plan, financial resources touched on. Programs covers everything from fire prevention initiations, public education and response programs. Physical resources, the equipping and the outfitting, along with the facilities, kind of gets captured there. Make sure we do things the right way for engagement of promotions and those kind of things. Make sure we're compliant with equal employment opportunities and those kind of things. Training and competency. A good example, for example, in fire, for example, we're required for our ISO to remain a two, we require 200 hours per line person of physical, outgoing, structural firefighting. We do this through our drill grounds, we do this through live-fire training and those kind of things, and it's measured when they come onsite. They look at those particular facilities. Essential resources, water, communication, and those kind of things, and then finally, external system relationships. That's probably our strongest category here because we've done a really good job of cultivating those relationships. Why are we doing it? Again, to just reemphasize, to continuously improve as an organization. It provides us a roadmap to follow. It'll provide us some direction. It'll identify some areas of weakness, which is expected. I, you know, I'm an optimist at heart, but I think when reports completed sometime between their site visit in November and the end of December, I anticipate probably 10 to 15 strategic recommendations coming forward, and probably seven to 10 specific recommendations. Strategic being they're tied to core criteria. Specific means they're, you need to do them, but you're not held to a high standard on them. Provides a mechanism for concurrent documents, and allows us to continue to further the organization and grow as an organization. The commission meeting, that's kind of the capstone to this year's process. It doesn't stop at this. It's really just the starting. It's going to provide us future, moving forward, some direction as well as this. You have to re-accredit every five years, which means you get to enjoy the pleasures of going through this whole process again, but it also keeps you on your toes to maintain efficiencies and proficiencies in tune with best practices. The assessment, as I mentioned, they're inbound on November 3rd. It'll be hitting your calendars with an invitation for the in-brief on November 4th, 8:30 downstairs. Hopefully, a few of you are able to attend. I think it's critical to put a face to the policy group at that meeting, as well as the city manager. And then they'll do an exit interview on the Thursday, which is November 7th, at which time they'll reveal our findings. And at this junction, there's really two possibilities. We become accredited and the recommendation is there, or we end up being deferred. Doesn't mean we're bad or not providing. It just means there's some core criterias that we need to fulfill before we can be deemed credible in those core criterias. All in all, again, I remain an optimist, and I think we're going to get this thing over the finish line. And with that, I'd entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that, Chief. I know accreditation requirements, at least in the healthcare field, are critical, probably even more so because without those accreditations, you can't treat Medicare patients. And the typical hospital has about 70% plus, and I'm sure in Prescott, it's a lot more. You were mentioning here that there's no financial impact to the city for adopting this accreditation process. So is that to apply? Is that to maintain membership?
There is a finite amount of expenditures. We host the site visit, which is the travel cost for the folks to travel here. There is a, it's $1,000 a year to maintain accredited agency status, which we've absorbed within our operating budget, but other than that, that is pretty much it on the financial piece. So you're looking at cumulatively, probably maybe an $8,000 expenditure one time and then a thousand a year.
Do you attribute the improvement in your ISO ratings to engaging in this process?
Somewhat. I think on the training side, yes. We think, you know, we understand that our minimum training requirements are what they are, and those are established through various standards, consensus standards. The ISO improvement, actually, I got to give credit where credit's due. Much of it came from our improvements in our water system. That had, we gained points in that area. We actually lost some points in communications due to some of the challenges we've had with radio infrastructure and those kind of things, but I think overall, it just kind of meshes real well and aligns the gears between the two things, ISO and accreditation.
This is strictly for fire response capabilities and excludes medical?
No, it is all risk. It covers medical, it covers fire, technical rescue, aircraft rescue, firefighting, hazardous materials response, all programs for which we have response capabilities.
And you were saying that less than 5% of the national fire departments have this accreditation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there any legitimate comparison with their fire suppression and potentially lower liability insurance costs for businesses and residents and those agencies that have this accreditation?
It is moving in that direction. Number of the things, even though it's been in and well-established for almost a couple decades right now, the leader in that particular avenue is still ISO, and, but what has been the experience and what I've seen across some of the site visits that I've done, most folks, once they finish going through this process one time, when they come due for their ISO, they see further improvements in their ISO rating, which has a direct effect to commercial specifically, but to some limited degree, residential insurance rates. So by moving through with the accreditation, we've already improved to a two. I know in the case of Kingman, Arizona, when they went through the accreditation process, on the heels of that, they brought forth and invited ISO to come back, and they moved from a four to a one. So there is that dovetailing between accreditation and ISO.
But it's just kind of indirect. Is that correct?
At this particular time, yeah. There's, actually, on the commission itself, aside from community-sized groups, it's made up of the IFF, the International Association of Fire Chiefs. ISO is also on there. So there is that, the shared fate that comes with both kind of sitting at the table at the same time.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations. This is a lot of hard work, and it looks like it's going to soon pay off.
I sure hope so. I'm an optimist.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, I need a little perspective here. You've made comments in the past that back in 1992, we have the same amount of personnel in the PFD that we have now.
Yes.
And we've actually grown about 65% since then. So could you kind of give me a little perspective on that comment? You know, my question, people have asked me, are, were we way heavy in personnel back in 92, and now we're just catching up? Or is there something that's systemically wrong?
Well, first off, you know, we've actually gone down in staffing sizes from the late 90s to what we are staffed with today, and what you see is a direct correlation to the response times. When you look at the response times back from the late 90s till today, those have exponentially grown, and our first unit arriving on scene, as we measured it through the accreditation process, isn't too bad, but it's well beyond the norm for a municipality of our size.
When you say "on the scene," do you mean to a fire or to an emergency medical response?
Regardless. It's independent of whatever type of emergency. Our first arrival unit is usually anywhere from six to seven minutes. While the national standard is about four minutes, so we're three minutes outside of that. What's driving that is, a lot of times, is the reliability. For example, Station 71 and Station 72 downtown areas. If Station 71's already out on a call, which it occurs very regularly throughout the day, Station 72 has to proceed to 71's area to cover the next call, and subsequently, if something happens in 72, you have a continuous movement. So what we're suffering with, as much as anything else, is our ability to concentrate enough resources to match the demand with the resources available. We haven't grown the number of fire trucks that respond from five, yet we've experienced exponential growth in the population. As much as I'd love to say people don't create our business, people create our business. And with that, that's what's creating the challenges, is more people and more density, and therefore, the uptick in calls for service in general. Thank you.
Just to follow that, Chief, so with more personnel, if you didn't add a station in our current situation, would you suggest having enough staff to then backfill, in your example, 71 without having to take from 72? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes. I mean, if we can't add a location for deployment, the next best course is to add concentration in the downtown area. Right now, through our partnership with CAFMA, up until this point in time, probably about a week ago, they have provided automatic aid into the city no less than 130 times since the beginning of the calendar year. In reciprocity to that, we've probably provided service into Prescott Valley less than half of that time. So we are creating added demand to the CAFMA model because of the density and the added call volume that we've experienced over many, many, many years.
Is this a first for Prescott Fire to be accredited? Do you know?
It is for Prescott Fire. Our neighbors, when it was Central Yavapai Fire District, at one time was accredited. When they went through the merger in 2017, I believe it was, they opted to, because there was not a bridge over when there's consolidations, so they forewent it. It is my understanding that it's on their bucket list again, but you know, it's one of capacity, organizational capacities to pursue it.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Chief. I really like the idea of continuous improvement, and I think that's necessary for an organization. At one time, we were talking about doing something better with the communication piece, so that you would know better about what to expect when you got on scene. Is there anything being done with that, with the PRCC, to, so that we're able to respond? Maybe it doesn't take a full-size truck? Maybe it's something of lesser degree? I haven't really heard, is that part of this as well?
At this particular time, that is being pursued on the input side of 911. What I mean by that is, is there an opportunity that we can turf off the lower acuity calls to just an ambulance? One of the things that we had to do before that could move forward is update some of our abilities within the emergency medical dispatching piece. Fires and the other risks are less important. You know, I've, I think at this particular junction, there's a way to do it, but it's very difficult to do it with what we currently have, because all you're doing then is taking something else out of the picture and reducing it. So the theory- and reducing it. So the theory is actually for bringing on a low-acuity unit is probably the most sensible approach to do it. We recognize, as do you, that costs money for us to add staff. It's really difficult to send two folks and leave a fire station sitting in quarters, because the operation of the apparatus isn't the costly bit, it's the people. If you send two people, that apparatus is sitting idle with one person, doing nothing. So, because you can't respond as an individual in the fire service. Unlike our colleagues in law enforcement, where a single officer can respond to certain types of emergencies, that doesn't work in the fire service model. I've often heard, you know, the change, the desire or want to change the model. The model, with all its efficiencies that we have today, is probably the only acceptable model to provide the service to this community that what has been vested to, from the community to us as wanted by the community. It's really tough to say, okay, well, we're going to pull two people off Engine 71, send them in a two-person patrol unit, and then you're leaving one person behind. It just, it's logistically impossible to do that, because you're not using the best benefit of what you do have. I'm not sure if that answered your question, Mayor Protem. It's, it's very challenging, to say the least. You know, holistically, I'd love to be able to stand up here and say, hey, this is what we're changing in the model, and we're only going to send two people. But the reality is, and the reference I always use is, if you have an emergency medical call up at Safeway, up off White Spar, and you send a two-person unit, well, then your fire truck is still sitting in the station. And then, say for example, you develop a car fire in the parking lot of Safeway. Well, that unit that you send with two people, a low-acuity unit, doesn't have the suppression and the tools necessary to put out the fire. So now your fire engine is coming from Sixth Street, which creates elongated response times. That's why the fire trucks are used much as a toolbox.
And I understand that. It just, just seems like if we're looking at continuous improvement and, and doing a better time with our response time, that we need to be looking at the whole picture of, of the whole model.
Right. And the two areas-
Rather than just staying with the same and-
Yeah. The, the two areas that we can show improvement in, twofold. One is the call processing time, how long it takes dispatch to accept the 911 call and alert the firefighters to respond. The only other piece we can have any control over is really how fast our folks can get to the fire truck and respond. Because the drive time is the drive time regardless. It is going to take you X amount of time to get from point A to point B. So you can't really change anything there. We've got some measures in place. Opticom, for example, allows us to preempt light signals, those kind of things. But the time, the wheel time, as it's called, is going to be the wheel time regardless of what, what type of vehicle or the number of vehicles that are responding.
At one time, we were talking about talking to some of the, Michael, some of the care providers-
We, we need to follow up-
And seeing if they would assist us to some degree, so we're not sending-
Sure. The mayor and I have talked about us doing some outreach to the assisted living facilities to ensure that they're staffed appropriately, and our medical personnel and fire personnel are not supplementing their nurses' aides by helping grandma back up. And we need to continue to do that. One of the things you mentioned very early on is the concept of dispatchers being able to triage calls better, right? And the chief alluded to it a little bit. We are working towards that. Some of that's a technology issue, and it's also a training issue for the dispatcher to better understand what's appropriate. The other part of this, we've also, and the chief's done a good job with this, we are trying to work with Lifeline to improve their level of response and their response times, acknowledging they have a certificate of need-
Sure.
-contract and a deal with us. We have tried to work separate from that to try to improve their ability to respond in a more timely manner. And I think those negotiations are going better.
Yeah. You know, it's in their court right at the moment. I provided a contract, we met probably three weeks ago with the Regional Director for American Medical Response. But it's a negotiation. You know, as I would have expected, you know, I want very ambitious time constraints, yet I also understand there's a business model that has to make it profitable for the profit company. So I'm very sensitive to that as how you get it. What I've put forth in the contract is what I feel is very receptive and doable within the Prescott community. And I've steadfast on that particular time, right at the moment. And I don't plan to waver unless it comes to a go-no-go, because I think there is a little bit of wiggle room, but not much in the time that it takes them to get there. Right now, we already experience, I would say, conservatively, 90-plus percent of the time for which a Prescott Fire Department unit arrives on scene before the ambulance. We'd like to see that flipped a little bit to more 50/50, which means they have to add capacity to their organization. But their CON covers 300 square miles. So we'll have to see where the contract ends up.
Our contract, Councilwoman Ora, would be separate from the CON, so the standard of service delivery here would look different than what they would provide in the rest of the jurisdiction. Because really, we should get the best response. We have the hospital here, and we have the highest density in terms of residents. So it's a long answer to a short question. Beyond what the chief's saying, there are elements that are being chipped away at or tweaked to try to improve the delivery of the service.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks again, Mayor. Chief, response times kind of piqued my interest. Can you give us a, a history of Prescott Fire Department response times?
I'd be going, shooting from the hip up here right at the moment, Councilman. I can tell you right now, our first unit on scene times are somewhere in the middle, somewhere between 7:30 and eight minutes for the first unit, which includes roughly a minute to 90 seconds of call processing, a minute to 90 seconds of turnout, and then the balance is wheel time. On a structure fire, those times extend because it takes more to dress out. But conservatively, I would say you're in the eight and a half to 10-minute range fairly consistently. That's the other thing we do, is we don't look at averages, we look at 90th percentile. The reason being, averages just says you're doing half really good and then half really not so good. So we've based it on the 90th percentile, and that's how we're measuring. But the EMS, I think, you know, to be realistic, brain death starts at about six minutes. So on a full cardiac arrest, to have a salvable, savable patient, we ideally perform better than what we're performing. Structure fires, you know, we're very fortunate in the sense that we do enough on the preventative side to kind of keep those at bay, but the EMS side is the, the real concern.
So that would all be part of the triage?
That is correct. The triaging piece, we'll drill it down to make sure we send the right unit. You know, right now, it's a, you have one choice or the other. You either respond with lights and siren, or you don't. The only thing we measure is those calls that require lights and siren. But the triage could drill some of those calls, so they're in the other category.
So, so you really can't tell me what response time was 10 years ago?
I, I could, but I just don't have it here with me.
Okay.
Yes.
We can follow up and get you guys-
I most certainly can get you all that information.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll do that.
And the, and the chief alluded to something else. On the fire side of things, especially commercial, and even to residential to a lesser extent, sprinkler systems and fire suppression systems are a lot better than they used to be. I think that's fair. And a lot of the saving of a domicile or a commercial business has to do with the requirements to sprinkle the business.
Yeah. Sprinklers save lives. That's straight and to the point.
Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Thanks. Sitting here, listening to the dialogue, you know, I sometimes think it's not all about, you know, more brick and mortar. I sometimes think it's about looking at providing one more firefighter employee per shift. So rather than have one left behind with the big box, you have a medical truck with two. If you get called out of the same station, you have two that get the box where it needs to go to be first on response on a fire, where then you have the rest of the troops following. So sometimes it seems to me, it's not so much about the spread out of the area, it's about putting multiple things happening in one area. And I, I would like, hopefully, to see a model that would show adding an employee to each one of those shifts, and what that would cost the city, and what that would do to improve our times within a jurisdiction.
Yeah. The, the one challenge you have there, as much as anything else, Councilman Blair, if you add it into, for example, Station 71, that's where you add your fourth body. The next call comes in at Station 74. So you respond at agency, and then you have this cascade effect, where your four persons are still sitting here, and your three persons are responding. And, you know, I, it would ease some of that, most certainly.
I'm not talking about just one station having four employees.
Right.
I'm talking about all stations being equipped to have a medical emergency vehicle as well as the box-
Right.
-where it could do multiple things at the minimum of cost, instead of putting a brick and mortar and a full crew on, that would be subsidized that way.
Yeah. Well, one of the challenges there, again, is kind of our geography. We have a really long run in the north end of town. And what we're seeing and trending is, some of those response times are well beyond that box that I just shared with Councilman Sishka. It might solve some of the downtown challenges, but we still will have a cascade effect out to the north end of town.
Mayor Protem?
So Dennis, what's the percentage of medical and fire?
About 61%.
So 61% medical?
Six, out of 10 calls are emergency medical services, yes, ma'am.
61. Okay. And I know, I don't want to get us down a track away from accreditation, but are there models out there that we've looked at that have shown how other communities might be doing it to, to look at the more of the medical, less fire?
Yeah. There, there's other communities out there, most of which have added low-acuity units into their response package, which means a single two-person unit with the additional of six people. And they respond to all the low-acuity calls across the geographical area. Therefore, it enhances your reliability by having your fire truck that's in a district stay in the district, and all the boo-boos and Band-Aid calls are turfed off to this one unit. And it ends up with queuing of low-acuity calls, but that's okay, because they're low-acuity. And it leaves the fire service forces in the five fire engines that we provide today in service in their district and available.
But then you're adding, not necessarily using what you already have.
Yeah. It would be really a stretch to try to do anything with what we have, because our numbers are so small to begin with.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Sorry, Maureen.
Chief, you've been doing this for a while. In a perfect world, estimate, here in Prescott, do what we need to do to get us to that 90th percentile of whatever that magic number is you want to get to. What do we need here in this department, in your estimation, to do that? You know, I'm not sitting here real happy to hear, you know, half the world gets, you know, four minutes, and we're, we're stuck at eight.
Yeah. I'll offer this from the rainbow and unicorn world, because I also am myself a fiscal conservative. To enhance on the numbers we have and improve on that, we really require a addition capacity of one fire engine and one, one low-acuity unit, to the tune of basically 15 FTEs. That's three on the engine, because when you grow numbers of people, you also have to accommodate for operational need to allow people to have time off. So you have one overfill there, and then the two for, for the low-acuity unit.
I think it's important for not only the council, but for the public out there, since we're on television, to hear as a fire chief, serving this community, what in your estimation is a necessary evil, so to speak, to get us where, as a chief, you think we need to be.
That is correct. And, you know, there are always stair-step methods to get to that point, too.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions, comments from council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Chief, thanks for the presentation, and continue the great work on accreditation. Appreciate your work.
Well, thank you all for your attention, and hopefully we'll see you all on November 4th for a little bit, and get this ball rolling. Thank you much.
Thank you, Chief. Let's move on to item 3B, please.
Update on Neighborhood Services.
Sorry, guys. Get out of here, he says. Get out of here. Get out of here.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman, City Manager's Office, here to give an update on our Neighborhood, Neighborhood Services Division. I'm going to talk about three things real briefly. Number one would be the neighborhood cleanups, then the newsbins, and a new initiative that we are proposing and looking to start here shortly. So to start with neighborhood cleanups, we've had three over the last year and a half or so. One in July of 2018, and then in November, and then the most recent was in May of this year. You can see on the map the three different areas that we've covered in the city in those different colors. We've had over 100 volunteers collectively show up at these neighborhood cleanups, and we've had over 25 tons of trash collected, which I think is pretty amazing, considering we just kind of started this and said, let's see what happens. So it's turned out really well so far. And we have a neighborhood cleanup coming up very shortly here on November 2nd. It's a Saturday. Everybody is invited to attend and to volunteer for as much or as little time as you'd like. That's an invitation to the councils, to the public, to anyone listening. It's from 10 to 2. We will be staging at the rodeo grounds, and near, I guess, the entrance on Gale Gardner there, by the U of A Cooperative Extension. We'll have some roll-offs there. We'll have a sign-up place, a place to come get your vests and your gloves, and any tools that you might need. And that is the area in yellow. And you can see, it's pretty much Gale Gardner on the left-hand side, going down to Gurley, and then going over east towards Miller Valley Road, and then up again. So it's a pretty large area. But we think we can do it based on past experience. So it should be good. Jumping now to newsbins, as you remember, the council passed an ordinance, basically disallowing the use of the colorful plastic bins or other sort of receptacles for newspapers, magazines, and other, and other things that people were placing on the city sidewalks and right-of-way. And this began, the implementation began the first week of July. Since then, we've worked really hard. Amber in our office has done a great job of, of making sure that everybody has gotten accommodated so far, which I'll tell you, has not been an easy or a short process. But it's worked out. We think everybody's pleased at this point. And we have five locations. If you don't remember, three are on Gurley Street, one is out here by the post office across from City Hall, and then another down on Willis and Cortez. So there's five locations, and it's, it's turning out well so far. And finally, the third thing I wanted to talk about was a new initiative that we are proposing and looking to do, which regards sidewalk care. And so, just a little bit of background, we find throughout different times of the year that sidewalk care is neglected from weeds, from snow, ice, cinders, trash, or the debris being left on sidewalks. And a lot of people just don't know that the sidewalk next to their private property is actually their responsibility to maintain, to keep up, to keep clean and free of that trash, and weeds, and snow, and ice, and other things. I won't read you the code, but there it is, in case nobody believes me, but it is there. And so what we're looking to do is really raise awareness, and to promote personal care and commitment for that sidewalk adjacent to your property. And the focus will be placed two times a year, in the spring and in the fall, which is when we typically start seeing issues with this. We're going to do a few things, including public outreach with utility bill inserts. We are going to send out postcards with some brief information to targeted areas, to business owners in the really high-traffic, high-volume areas such as Gurley, Sheldon, Willow Creek, and others throughout the city. We're going to be updating our website, the code compliance website for the city's page, as well as social media. We recently had a radio public service announce, announcement recorded that'll be airing through, I think, October 15th through the end of November, just to get some awareness there. And then looking to include sidewalk cleaning, getting rid of some weeds, and of course, the trash and other things that we've normally done during the neighborhood cleanups, but really thinking about the sidewalk care in those areas that we're focused on as well. And here, here's just the drafts. Again, these are drafts of- Again, these are drafts of the postcards that we'll be sending out to those businesses in the high-volume corridors, looking different times of the year. You can see on the top is for fall and winter, and then the bottom is for spring, basically saying, remember, the weeds on the sidewalks next to your property, please get those cleaned, and keep your sidewalks clean and clear, and keep Prescott pretty. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good presentation. It's a very nice tie you're wearing today, too.
Thank you.
I became aware of the sidewalk ordinance a few years ago, because when the cinders go out on the roads, and they get spread over even onto the sidewalk, then on our camp property, we have, I don't know, probably a half-mile, probably more than that, three-quarters of a mile of sidewalk that we sweep after the cinders hit those sidewalks. So, because people don't like to walk on those cinders, believe it or not. So, it can be time-consuming, but it is the responsibility of those private property owners. Councilman Blair?
Thank you. First of all, I don't like the ordinance, so I'll just leave it at that. And the fact that the city of Prescott, the people that have the property in front of their properties, the sidewalk, is not owned by those folks, it's owned by the city. So why don't we just tell them they need to keep the road clean as well in front of their property? My problem is, is you drive through Prescott, and you always want to say it's the most beautiful place in the world to live, and drive down East Gurley Street, and you'll see all these weeds on different buildings that aren't occupied, maybe rentals, maybe ownership. If we're going to go to that level, then we need to not just sit there and say, hey, you need to clean up your stuff. And so now we've gone three months, and the entrance in our town still looks like crap. We need to go out there as a city, take care of the crap, and send them a bill, if we're going to have this ordinance. Because we're not going to get anywhere sending a nice postcard, because they're going to look at it, and they're going to do nothing. But I still believe the ordinance is flawed, in the fact that we rely on commercial avenues within the city of Prescott to be maintained by absentee property owners that may rent their properties, but yet we still want to say we have the cleanest, neatest city around. And some people just don't care. And I think it's the responsibility of the city to make their thoroughfares clean, and not that of the property owner. So I'll just leave it at that.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you, Tyler, for bringing this forward. I know the code enforcement team, you have been working diligently over the last year to try to kind of polish up and clean up these communities, especially, I'll say neighborhoods more likely. And I think the ordinance, like all ordinances, if we're going to enact it, then we need to enforce it. And if we're not willing to enforce it, then we shouldn't be enacting it. But I think the code enforcement team has done a pretty good job of that. We've been monitoring their efforts monthly over this period of time, and I think we're seeing some pretty clear, positive results from that. Even the neighborhood cleanups, I think, surprised a lot of people about how many, how many community members volunteered, the vast amount of cleanup that was done in private residences and other places. I think it really encourages those people who do have pride of ownership to continue to keep up their properties when they know their neighbors are going to be expected to do it as well. And I think we're seeing some nice, positive results from it. I know the news bins particularly are an example of something that has polished up, so to speak, the downtown core pretty well. I was coming out of Lonesboro Cafe about three or four months ago, after finishing breakfast at about eight o'clock, and there was a couple standing on the corner there saying, you know, something's changed here. I don't know what it is, but it just seems to be a lot cleaner and nicer. And they were standing right in front of where those old, broken-down, plastic news bins were. So even though the public may not have a direct connection of what those efforts are, I think they're starting to pay off. So I, for one, I think it's a, it's a good process. It's, it allows community residents to participate and be involved in making sure that our community stays cleaned up and stays attractive. So thank you, and thank those code enforcement officers for their efforts as well.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, thank you, Tyler. I agree with Councilman Good. I did a neighborhood cleanup, and it's really, you know, I lived in, where I lived in when I was a kid, basically, it was a low-income area, but boy, we kept it shiny. And I think people had that pride of ownership, and think the more that we clean up our neighborhoods, the more people go, you know, I better clean up my side. I remember when Rossar Street and certain portions, I mean, that's really gone through a magnificent change, I think. There's still some areas, but it's really cleaner, it looks better. This is going to help immensely around the rodeo grounds. And so, and I hope that we're contacting, like, I'll certainly let Big Brothers, Big Sisters know, Boys and Girls Club, all of these groups that need service, they can really help us with this. And it just teaches. When I was a principal, I constantly was picking up trash on our campus. It teaches people to pick up and to clean up, and I think that that's what this is setting an example. So Tyler, I really commend you on your work and what you're all doing. It's really tremendous, so I see a difference, I feel a difference in it, and so thank you for that.
Councilman Scholl?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Tyler, for all your hard work. I think in terms of, you know, keeping sidewalks clear, a lot of people may not know that that's their responsibility. And so just letting them know may, may help with that and encourage them to get out and clean up their sidewalks. It can definitely be a project, especially when it snows 24 inches and 24 hours, but, you know, I think as, as long as we're letting people know that it's their responsibility, hopefully that encourages that pride of ownership and that sense of community. And I think, you know, advertising that type of stuff during our neighborhood cleanups is a really good way to, to promote that as well. So thanks for all your hard work.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman Scholl. Communication's a very important thing. I go back to a timeframe in history when a city tree, right out here in front of City Hall, tripped a lady, she busted all her teeth out, and the sidewalk was all busted up, and the city tried to make her pay to get her teeth fixed. So at the end of the day, you know, you got to lead by leadership, and I think the city needs to be as responsible for its property as you expect the residents to be, so communication's an important thing.
Councilman Blair?
Yeah, not to belabor, I mean, you're doing a great job, Tyler, and I think the neighborhood cleanups are a prime example of that. But on the other hand, you know, we're cleaning up everybody else's property as a city, but yet we're having a requirement that they take care of the cinders that we put on the sidewalk. But if somebody trips on those cinders or falls, guess who they're going to sue? Not the property owner, they're going to sue the city of Prescott. And I just believe we have an overall arching responsibility to take care of those sidewalks, because they are for public infrastructure, to move people, and we want to pass it off like it's a responsibility of the property owner. And I think that's wrong. And I'm going to always say that's wrong, because, again, we at, around Prescott, Arizona, are very proud of our downtown square, our plaza, it's not square, so we'll call it a plaza, but yet the city of Prescott takes care of the sidewalks, steam cleaning them, cleaning them up, getting all the puke and everything else off of them. Where is that any different than my sidewalk out in front of my house that has cinders on it from the city of Prescott? So what we do is we treat one different than we treat the other. Frankly, I think the city should change their code and have the responsibility, hire the people if we need to hire the people, to take care of the public infrastructure, which includes the sidewalks. And I'll just leave it at that.
Any other questions, comments from council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. Tyler, thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.